Gloves Off is always on point. Bringing you the best on current issues, community affairs, and the happenings around us. This segment of Gloves Off is brought to you by the best, so pay them a visit, check 'em out. This is Gloves Off.
Well, 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 well. You're listening to Gloves Off with Professor Mutron. All right then, I'm gonna say words on point, straight forward, no jibber jabber, everybody forward. Issues, facts, and solution, get it at Gloves Off with Professor Mutron. All right, what a day is a revolution, get it on point with Professor Mutron. Gloves Off, no nonsense issues, politics, community, a better man for Laredo. Gloves Off, a revolutionary show, with everything that you need to know with Professor Mutron. Watch ya!
We're here with City Councilman Roberto Vali. And we're gonna be touching base on the water issue that's been going on here in Laredo. Good morning, Councilman, how's it doing?
Good morning.
You doing good?
I'm doing well, I'm doing well.
Awesome, awesome. We spoke last week, and you know, we've been seeing how that situation was with the water. And what has come of age?
Well, one of the things is, and I know a lot of people have commented that they're smelling that chlorine, which is, we have a chlorine burn going on, that chlorine burn, we do it twice a year, it got moved up this year. And so people are smelling that chlorine because the system is being purified or flushed. They're also flushing some water out of the system because, you know, one of the issues, the issue's being a lot of water that's just standing still in the system. So they're trying to move the water through the system better, flush some out, remove some water from the system so that the water's circulating better, so that it can hold the chlorine better. Because there are, you know, the issue has been that the chlorine, at least TCEQ, what they're telling us is that the chlorine just isn't staying, holding, like, when they put it in and then the chlorine levels seem to be dropping. So they're doing what they can right now with the advice of TCEQ on how to keep those chlorine levels up.
Good. Now, the main concern will be the water safe to drink and so on and so forth, and how long is this process gonna take?
Well, we're told, we're told on, at the Monday council meeting, that by Wednesday it was very possible that the boil water notice could be removed. And that's because management was working very directly with TCEQ, and they were getting that from TCEQ. And basically what they were looking at was just that the chlorine levels would remain at the level that they wanted, that they wouldn't be dropping. Because remember, this has never been an issue with this boil water notice about there being bacteria in the system. It's been about the fact that the chlorine wasn't holding. So we're looking for the water department ways to keep that chlorine in there.
Okay. What, some of the questions that have arisen in the last week with all this was, number one, how long did the city know about this issue? Because there's different, there's different stories out there, I kind of wanna kind of put everything in one place. Some people say it was back to August, some people say it was back to May, some people last year. So where was it when TCEQ, right, TCEQ notified the system and notified the water works and then notified the city?
Well, at the council meeting, we had the benefit of having TCEQ there. And so what they, the way that they described it to us was that in September was when they felt that their, the chlorine levels were not keeping. And so even though, yes, there had been other communications with the water department, it wasn't until September, just a few days actually before the boil water notice, that they sent a letter to the city saying, "You've got an issue with these chlorine levels, we need to address it." And then the communication between TCEQ and the water department started.
Okay. So that means that the protocol came down, you need to take these steps, and then all of a sudden we're in what we're in now.
Well, and it was, it was just, you need to keep these levels up, but TCEQ, I guess at that point, wasn't really involved. They weren't really providing a lot of guidance in any of it, other than to say, "Get these levels, we expect you to have these levels here." And, which is typical, is that typically the water department, you know, and water departments everywhere, they're running on their own, and they're only getting notices from TCEQ as far as if there's any, if there's any issues. Because there's constant monitoring of water systems.
Absolutely.
And so they're receiving, they're receiving notices, they'll receive complaints. So all that TCEQ is processing, and so, yeah, there will be communication with TCEQ. But that's, I guess, daily in a sense as far as reporting, but not necessarily guidance on how to deal with each issue. Here, what's different at this point is that once the boil water notice came, our city staff has worked very closely with TCEQ, had brought them in, and they've been helping us address the issue.
Okay. One of the, one of the main issues that came up, one of the main questions that came up is, did somebody had sent a unanimous complaint?
Right.
And how he's come forth, and what actually occurred with that? Was it somebody doing it as a concern, or was it somebody doing it for some other reason?
You know, I can't say that, and as a matter of fact, one of the, I made a motion, which was approved by council, to investigate everything, and so we get an independent investigator to give us those answers. I mean, I know that that individual and water department officials have a different, a different version. Because the water department officials, what they told us, in fact, our director said that as soon as they received the complaint, this, it was said at council, you know, there's video of it, city council, and people can review it. And I'm gonna tell you my recollection, but the way I understood it was, there was a complaint, it was addressed immediately, that city staff advised the person that they had a water filtration system. Now, people, some people think water filtration systems are supposed to remove bacteria, and in fact, they don't. They're there to remove, to make water soft water, basically to take out some of the chemicals you find in water. So, and people will notice that they have a system that the water won't spot their dishes. If you don't have one, it will spot your dishes, but it doesn't remove bacteria. And so with this individual, when he made a complaint, they checked his system, and, you know, according to the city, you know, the water that was coming into his house did have bacteria, but that wasn't reflective of the street, that it was reflective of his water filtration system. They said that the problem with the water filtration system was that it should be somewhere in a covered area that's shaded, and this particular filtration system was outdoors. It shouldn't have been that the manufacturer required that it not be outdoors, or recommended, I guess, that it be indoors. And that they were telling, that their belief was that because of that, that that was causing a lot of heat, you know, it was a hot place, this was in August, this complaint came in in August.
The bacteria grew.
That, and it was causing bacteria to grow. And when I heard that, it's very concerning, I guess, for all citizens who have filtration systems, not just, you know, for this gentleman, is, is to know how your system works and how, where it's supposed to be. So I'm just telling you what I heard, but I'm waiting for the report. Because that report should tell us more about all the causes. And not just the causes, but all the communication that happened, when steps were taken, what steps should have been taken, did we take the right steps, did we take the wrong steps? I mean, obviously, something we did, somewhere, we did it wrong.
Sure.
But that's what, that's what we wanna know.
And that comes to my next question, because last, last week, you know, somebody had posted that several of the folks that were employees of the water, water utility department were not certified. That they were certified one year, not certified the other years, they hadn't gone to recertification. Is that true, if I can ask?
Well, what, again, you know, all that we'll find through the investigation. But this council meeting, somebody kind of yelled that out, or said it, made a public comment. And then, I mean, staff that came forward had been certified, or was certified, I don't, and I can't, I can't tell you whether they were certified every year or not, because that's new information to me. But the staff that is running the water department is certified in that, the engineers.
Okay. Okay, so when, when would you all get the investigation, I mean, how long is that gonna take?
And that, I don't know, I don't know how many months, I mean, it's gonna be months, and we expect it to be months before we get back a report, but when we do get back the report, you know, that, that, it's gonna give us things to address. We also asked for, at the meeting, and we also approved a plan, a plan for how to prevent this. Now, I know this was that even before this, our water utilities director had come to, to council, and it was very contested, they came for a rate increase. And the reason for the rate increase was to invest in the system. And although I understood why the council approved it, I did vote against it, and that'll be clear, that I did vote against it. But the reasoning was correct, though, of staff, from what I could see. And it was, "We need to invest in the system." As a matter of fact, now, you know, as this is happening, some of what we're seeing is, could be, from these reports, a lack of proper investment in the system itself. And so it's just, it's just like anything, it's just like anything else, you know, if you have a, if, if, I mean, our water department belongs to the community.
Of course.
Okay? It's not like some communities, some communities have, in fact, Laredo at some point had a private water company, that was a disaster. But they have a private water company. So all you care about from the water department is clean water and cheap rates.
Sure.
Here, we have a different responsibility, because the community cares about, yeah, clean water, cheap rates, but, but we're also responsible for maintaining the system, right? So we're responsible for maintaining the system. So it's like if you had your own water system in your home, and you're responsible for maintaining that. You know, yeah, you want, you don't wanna pay, but you want clean water. I mean, if a pipe burst in your house and you don't fix it, you're gonna, your whole house is gonna get ruined. So there are times when you have to invest. What, what they were asking us for is investment now. By actually, this, this last motion that was made and resolution passed by council, not only are we gonna get the report as to what happened, but we are also going to get an independent company to see if these investment steps that, that the utilities department is asking for, are they necessary, are they correct, or, or should we be investing differently? And so I think it'll help us in making better investment decisions now. We passed, we're passing the bonds that we need with this rate increase, the bonds to make the investments. We need to make sure we make the right, the right investments, and so we're gonna get that report back too. Because we don't wanna invest and then find out, well, you know, you made the wrong investments.
Understood. Now, let's take a look at the other issue. The other issue was the mass hysteria that occurred.
Sure.
You know, because that, to me, was more concerned, because I understand the fluctuations of waters.
Right.
And putting all that, you know, we, you know, especially, we have pumps at the ranch, so we have to always be maintaining. But what I'm looking at is how the panic erupted, and how come it wasn't controlled right away? Especially when the fire chief is the one that's supposed to be taking care of it. Where did that lack of confusion come in, or what occurred?
Well, I, I, I think that, when you look at that, that really occurred for about 12 hours to 24. Because when this notice came out, this notice came out late in the evening, or afternoon, late evening. The first one, late afternoon, and then the second one, late evening, and on Saturday. And by 2:00 in the afternoon, the community was being advised that this only affected one part of the community. And so I think that, that, at that point, even though there was still some people, you know, very concerned about getting water, half the community said, "No, we don't need it." Well, at least about a third said, "We don't need to worry about going and buying bottled water." So it, it, two-thirds were still in that situation. I think that our, in that aspect, we failed, we could have had a, our management didn't have a system in place for trying to get out the right information immediately. However, had we gotten out all the right information, I still think people were gonna rush to store by water. I mean, I think that that would have happened regardless. And what caused the hysteria was that, I think, you know, at the beginning, everybody, and then two-thirds of the people were saying, "Well, we need to get bottled water." And as much as you tell people, as a matter of fact, in our, in our press conference that we had on Sunday, which I think was very widely distributed, you know, we said, "Don't rush out and get more water than you need." People were still rushing out and getting more water than, than they needed. Now, at that point, there were, there were some shortages, but as part of that press conference, we were also saying, "Look, you know, we're hearing from HEB, we're talking to HEB, they, they, you know, they got water in San Antonio that they can get us, it's not gonna take long." So, you know, HEB was still able to be delivering water to folks, it's just that people were wanting to get 10 cases instead of, instead of just what they needed for the day, one or, one or two.
You see, that's, that's where it came in, you know, because that came in on Sunday, and I ran into an experience over a family daughter. I didn't know what was going on until my dad tells me, "Yeah, we're gonna have to go look for some water." "Oh, okay." And then I looked on Facebook, and everybody's on there. And I saw fight, one of the Walmart's, and so on and so forth, and, you know, I witnessed, and I stopped, and a man pulling out the water from an elderly woman's cart, because his wife told him to pull it, and that, you know, put it back in there, that's her, pay for it, and that's the end of the story.
Right.
In fact, I escorted her out to her car. But when we have people driving out, you know, the good Lord was with us, because nobody, no accidents occurred.
Right.
Okay? But it teaches us a lesson, that we have to understand how to use social media, how to use all the media outlets, and how to maybe turn on another protocol to, for the chief to step in and take control of the whole thing.
And that's what we need, because, I mean, if you look at this compared to a big flood or hurricane, this is relatively, relatively smaller.
And look what happened.
And still, right, and look what, and look what happened. So, you know, had we been in a flood, had we been in a hurricane, you know, we look at how this was handled as far as communication, it was handled very poorly. And so, yeah, management, management is, is looking at better ways of handling it.
God forbid, a riot would have started like what happened with the Rodney King over in Los Angeles, because we wouldn't, we'd be overpowered. That's my outtaking of this in the safety council ways.
Sure, I agree.
And, I mean, we really have to step back, and all of us, okay, what can we do? Because we really do need to prepare for that, you know, preparedness is a good one. But now, jumping a couple of months down the road, let's say the investigation comes in. And let's say that the investigation says, "Yeah, there was some severe incompetence from a department." Really not, "Oh, here, this is what happening."
Right.
What are your all steps?
Well, as, our, our job is city council. There's two jobs here, there's city council, there's management. City council, we elect our managers. Managers, they, they decide department heads. But, and so it would be, council can't go and say, "We're gonna go get rid of some, someone other than a city manager," right? But, by the same token, by, the council does have that power over the manager. And so depending on how this comes out, you know, it would be up to the city manager to take steps that this council thinks is, are the right steps. And this council, you know, we're all elected by constituents, by people that live in our districts. And so, you know, we're listening to what they're saying. And so depending on, on what, what they're saying, you know, we'll, I think, you know, well, the city manager will, will have to reflect on that, and then, and then make, make their decision. So, yeah, could someone lose their job based on this report? Yeah, I mean, obviously, yes, because we, you know, we don't know what the report's gonna say. We have to wait and see what, what the report says, and then we'll do the right thing at, at that time. But I think also that it's, it's not prudent to jump to any conclusions until we have the report. I mean, we've seen, as part of all of this, we've seen some bad, we've seen some good. And so we want, we just wanna make sure that, that the community has the right person at city manager, and the community has the right person directing all the departments. Because that's the city manager's job, to make sure that they get the right department heads. And so, yeah, we'll, we'll, we're waiting for that report, and we'll see how, how we take it from there.
Right now, what are the steps, or what are the parts of the city that are still affected? But it's still, still south side, west side, kind of?
It, no, no, south, south side, central, west side is good. West side, it's, if you go to the, the southern part of Sacate Creek, Sacate Creek runs all the way from the river all the way up to Canal Street. And then, basically, Sacate Creek becomes a drainage ditch there, and goes, starts heading east. So if you, everything west of Sacate Creek, out in that area, and then from there, kind of along, so if you go from the river, I mean, you go from Sacate Creek at the river west, like downtown, you know, all the neighborhood, all the neighborhoods on that side, Las Teca, Del Cuatro, La Riera, you know, and then further north, like Salsipuees, Cantarranas, all that is good. So once Sacate Creek, right by Dr. Ices, turns into Canal Street, then kind of the area that's good is along the other side of I-35, then it starts becoming the other side of I-35, west, that's good. And everything sort of north of that Canal Street. Now, at some point, though, as you go along east, there's a little area right around Saunders that is still affected. But definitely, everything, everything south of Saunders is affected. In the areas of the two Retamas, those are still affected. So it kind of cuts out that little area, that Retamas, one and two, and then, and then it kind of, the line kind of goes back to, towards Saunders. So it, it, it's a big part, it's two-thirds of the, two-thirds of the water lines, or two-thirds of the water taps that are affected. Even though it seems like geographically, it's like half and half, there's a lot more houses out in the, in the areas that are affected. Because it affects like the heights, it affects Chacon, and Santo Niño, and all those new neighborhoods in the, in the south are all, are all affected. So it's a big portion of the community that, that.
That was, that's affected?
Yeah.
Number one, you said that communications, you all are gonna start looking into that.
Sure.
Is that happening already?
Management is, you know, been given direction at the last council meeting, that, how they should approach that. And it's a change of communication system, so they're coming up with a communications plan.
Okay.
Emergency plan.
Good to hear, especially for, with, there's already an emergency, which is the fire chief, but, you know, something like this to step up into plan. What else, what are the next steps? What should people be concerned about? Some, some of the folks are concerned about that there's illnesses going on related to the water. Is that true, have you heard anything?
I mean, our health department director has been on it, and, you know, as far as the system not having bacteria, it's never had bacteria, so, I mean, I mean, it's very hard to convince people they're sick that, that, you know, it wasn't, you know, related to something. I mean, there are people that think that vaccines cause autism, you know, there's a lot of people that think that. And so convince them otherwise, you know, you talk to doctors, they say, "No, that's nonsense." But convince them otherwise. Same thing with the, with the water, I mean, if someone may think that, and if they do think that, we, what I would encourage them to do is to go to the health department and get checked and, and report it. And that way, we can see if it's true, because we need to know that. But up to now, no, there's been nobody confirmed to get, to have gotten sick from the, from the water, because it hasn't had bacteria in it. And so, but I, I, I would think that's the best way someone could approach this, go to the health department.
Because, yeah, it has to be documented, number one, for us to say, "Oh, it did happen." You know, because if you go to your other doctor and he goes, "Well, you know, what'd you eat yesterday?"
Right, it was, and sometimes you think, you think, "Well, I got sick because I ate at a restaurant," but it may not, it may not be that, you may have a virus, you may, I mean, we, we, very often, we don't know what the, the cause, sometimes we do. And so if somebody thinks that that, the water's the cause, definitely go to the health department, because that's a big concern, and we would wanna, we would wanna know that, the whole community would wanna know that. Because that's, the health department would need to issue notices, and, you know, we need to tell TCEQ, and, I mean, that's crucial.
Okay.
But up to now, none.
Up to now, none. Well, number one, I wanna thank you for keeping this up, posted on everything that you're doing. And let's wait until Wednesday, right? Let's see if TCEQ just removes it.
Let's hope so.
Let's, let's pray.
Let's hope so, yeah, I think the whole community would, would like that. I, I certainly would, would like that, because I know a lot of people are struggling.
That is, right, they're struggling. And there's still water being given?
Yes, yeah, we, we sought out water to purchase from HEB, and they said, "No." They said, "No, we're not gonna sell it to you, we're gonna give it to you." And, you know, I wanna thank, I wanna thank HEB for that. And I tell you, it's HEB, they, they have a department that does that. My sister was in Austin, she was a victim of a terrible flood. And HEB was there in their neighborhood, giving out food and water, and they were taking care of them. And now I've seen HEB do the same thing for, for our community when we needed them. And so, you know, we, you know, obviously owe HEB a big, big thanks for
Absolutely.
for being involved in that, and our city staff for, for, you know, staffing it and, and, you know, distributing the water, and so, you know, we're thankful for everyone who's been involved in, in that.
Well, I wanna thank you for coming down here.
All right, thank you.
And we'll do it, we'll do it again, if anything else changes, come out here and let us know exactly where we're at, and which steps to take, you know, because it's always, it's always good to see, especially to hear from you, the councilor, and those that represent us, why? Because many people can, many decisions are, some are seen with a yes, no, and it's gavelled, yea, nay, and they don't understand the reasons why things occur, especially in the city. You know, they might see it often in, in TV, just a portion, they actually don't realize what's behind it.
Right.
And right now, it's important to understand that there is an investigation. They're trying to fix the problem, and we're still getting help for those out there. And the main, important one is, if you, if folks, if you feel that you're sick, please go to the health, health department and document the whole thing, because this is a huge process.
Absolutely.
Okay, until next time, peace.
Thank you.